Um incentives for, I mean, we're a small city, so it's easily bikeable.
Who's came on?
Usually come on.
I have to turn it on.
No, you shouldn't have to. Is it plugged in?
Yeah, it's this. This is going down there.
You don't, I don't know what's on the button to turn it on. Do you know what's on the, right there maybe?
There you go.
Oh.
Good job. Yeah.
I had to push the button.
Is the button on?
Right there, right there.
It's called push the turn on button.
Where's the button at?
Right there.
On the bottom?
Right there, there you go. There we go.
There you go.
My home is on the side.
I think they asked you when you were on the computer, did you turn it on?
Makes you feel intelligent.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll remember that next time. Are we on? Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, we'd like to welcome everyone out to our six P M planning commission meeting for Tuesday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. We have all of our commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Herman, and he's being excused. We will next call for public comment. Uh, if there are any items that the public would like to address at this time. Aside from our, thank you, aside from our agenda today. Uh, we now have some open time for three minute uh issues to be addressed to the commission. And seeing none, we will move next to item C. Presentation and reports, the community development update. Mr. Cooper, please.
Thanks Chair. Good to see you all. Appreciate the time. Um, we do have a couple of updates. The Mission BBQ is underway. You've probably seen that. Uh, so Honey Baked Ham is actually looking for a different location within the city. Um, so we're hopeful for that. Um, we submitted to the Wasatch Front Regional Council uh grant application for some money to help us to uh master plan the Stringtown property area, which we're calling all this river bottom area, and they awarded us two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we asked for five hundred and they gave us two, which was kind of the highest amount that they gave for that category. So with our local match, we'll have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to go into the master planning process for this area. So you'll be part of that. The public will be part of that. It'll be an exciting time. It'll take us most of the rest of this year. And we'll get to envision what three hundred acres of Riverdale City looks like.
Nice.
Um, Trader Joe's is still plugging away with their uh permit process, so we should see construction start uh soon there. The latest update I got for completion date is sometime around October. Um, and uh we did reach out to Trader Joe's themselves and they gave us a little bit of insight about um how they announced their new locations and why this new location hasn't been announced. And they generally only do that anywhere from three to six months prior to the actual store opening. And um with this being a leased property and the landlord having to do some improvements to the building, then they actually haven't gotten to that point where they are that three to six month distance away. So hopefully we'll see their announcement when we get closer. Um. America First is almost done with the pylons up on the hill. Has that been affecting anybody's daytime activities?
I haven't heard anything.
We hear it go boing boing.
We hear it.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Only outside.
It's not bad.
Yeah.
So they'll be finishing up the hillside, but then they're actually working on the parking structure and building A of Phase One right now. Um, mostly the parking structure, and they also will be driving pylons for it. That could get a little louder because it's up on the hill and it will be, it'll echo a little bit differently, I think. Um, so keep that in mind. That'll be happening over the next few weeks as well. And then the normal projects that uh we've been discussing recently are still underway. The Ken Garf is moving right along. The townhomes uh that are being built north end of town are um almost done with their foundations, so you'll see vertical construction here soon. And if you haven't been by Coleman View, uh you should go by. Maybe ask the site superintendent if you can walk through the model. If not, let me know and we can go. They did a great job on that model home. There's an A D U, internal A D U on the bottom with a separate entrance. It's well done. So we'll see a lot of those homes. Um, I think we've permitted hmm eleven or something, six, yes.
Sixty-two total, wasn't it?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Look at me there, that three or four is already almost done.
Mm-hmm. That first one, as you come in, the the not off-white one with kind of gray, that's the model home. And then the others are just for sale.
They haven't sold any yet, right?
Um, I don't know. I haven't asked that.
Panera Bread's moving along quickly. Looks good down there.
Yeah.
Isn't that amazing that?
How's that back end gonna connect over to Starbucks? I mean, it's right now a big hole in the
Yeah.
in the mountain there. Is they gonna connect that straight across to three hundred or is that gonna be independent?
We're working on it. So right now, the, there's a retention wall that gets built to hold up the hillside and the Shake Shack side. Um, the Starbucks property has granted an easement going to three hundred. Um, and so you can leave Panera and go um to three hundred through Starbucks. But we haven't got the easement granted to the south, let's call it, um, or the east-west.
West.
Um.
South, I guess.
Yeah, southwest. It's kind of skewed. Um, so we haven't got that easement from Shake Shack and or the property owner there. And uh so we're trying to work that out now so that we can build that slope accordingly and and it'll it'll work out. That's it.
Um, I noticed Subway has exited.
Mm-hmm.
They're not there anymore.
Right.
Joann's is leaving.
Yep.
And any word on Starbucks when they're gonna be uh working that drive-through?
Uh, no, they've been permitted for some time, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, DXL is almost finished uh where the old Aaron's used to be. That'll be a nice store.
Was it the dentist? And we were talking about that behind.
Mm-hmm.
Said you're gonna have to give up your parking back behind.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no news on that.
Okay. All right, thank you for that report. Next, we'll move to consent items, consideration of meeting minutes from January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five for the work session and regular meeting and February twenty fifth of twenty twenty five for also the work session and regular meeting. Uh, Commissioners, any uh amendments or corrections to that information? Okay, then a motion would be in order to approve those? I make a motion to approve?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The uh, the motion passes. Next, we have action item uh E. Public hearing to receive and consider public comments regarding the following consideration and recommendation of a legislative decision to amend Riverdale City Code ten dash nineteen dash nine temporary structures for seasonal sales. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Cooper for more information on that, please.
Okay, thank you. We just have a few slides. Um, I'll direct your attention mostly to the packet uh, the the transmittal that is attached to the agenda. In that, you'll see the full code written out. It's the strike through uh in the packet, and then the proposed new language is the red language, and so I'll just cover that briefly. But um I would uh recommend you look at that as we talk. So this is a request from the McFarland Family Farms. You may be aware of them. Um, they were hoping to be here tonight, but about um five o'clock, we received an email that said that they weren't able to make it. So um, keep that in mind as you as you move on with the agenda in terms of your recommendation. Uh, so right now, we have uh in in ten nineteen nine, we have certain language that regulates two things in in that section. It regulates temporary structures and what they look like and where they're placed. And also the um sell, the sale of seasonal products and the definition of that. The part that is essentially governing the temporary structure, it's a little problematic. Um, the way that it reads is it's an acceptance or approval by exception, meaning that if we receive a request to put a temporary structure up for whatever reason, um, then I have the authority to approve that based on the number of exceptions that I have to make to the current code. Does that make sense? Um, and so there's a waiver request that it calls for, and I have to look at how many deviations that request makes from the current code and where it might be located and if it does certain things. And it's a little bit clumsy and um and confusing. In addition to that, the definitions of seasonal products is very sparse and and also, I think, confusing, and I've listed it here. Um, so seasonal products include but are not limited to Christmas tree lots, shaved ice and snow cones, state-regulated fireworks, but because of the availability of local and imported fruits, vegetables, and flowers that are available year-round, those are not considered to be seasonal products. So I think that's a little confusing. I think we can make that a little bit better. And so based on the the request from McFarland Farms, they they wanted to put their um, so they have a commercial farm out in West Weber, and they sell into grocery stores through Associated, I believe, and they also have roadside stands. And so they they were hoping to put a roadside stand in Riverdale. Because of the way that this code reads today, um, not only are they only, they're not allowed to do it in any zone. The fact that they sell seasonal um fruits and vegetables, or vegetables in their case, um, that's produced off-site, so at a different location, they they wouldn't be allowed to do that. Um, and that code was actually changed to to read that way in two thousand thirteen, the limitation of of seasonal fruits and vegetables. Um, it was changed in two thousand thirteen to include that and that limitation. So right now, there's not um, there's not any location in Riverdale that they can have a roadside stand because they don't produce their fruits and vegetables on the site in which they want to have the stand. So if you live in an A-one zone and you have a farm and you want to sell your fruits and vegetables in front of your farm on your property, that's allowed. Um, but because they uh are coming from out of the city and um aren't producing it locally uh and it's considered uh non-seasonal, um, then it's not allowed. Uh, they are interested in only going into places in the C-three zone um, in places that may not have a competitor um adjacent to them so that they're competing with other uh local businesses that might have um, that might have the same kind of products. So again, we're looking to make clarifying changes um to be affirmative in the permitted zones, so it's very clear where it's permitted and where it's not permitted. Have clear standards for the temporary structures that associate, that are associated with these kinds of seasonal sales and establish permitted uses. So that's the red language in the in the draft. So I thought we would talk about some examples of what a temporary structure for seasonal sales might look like. Um, so these are just examples random that I pulled off of the internet, and some of these we do allow. So we do allow fireworks. Uh, they they go to Michelle and they get a permit. We do allow Christmas tree sales. Uh, they also go to Michelle, get a permit. The one on the bottom right is a farmer's market. We do allow that. Um, the pumpkin stand, again, we would not allow currently unless it was your pumpkin stand in front of your house where you grow the pumpkins in an A-one zone. Uh, Hokalia and other snow cone shacks, we allow those. Um, again, all of these are on private property. That's the current standard. Um, that private property owner has to give um, has to give permission for that to happen. They can't happen on vacant lots or in random places. They have to be um places that people can access. And again, the discretion that I have is to determine under the current code if there's public restrooms nearby and where the utilities are coming from. And so it's really, there's a lot of variability there, which we're trying to correct.
Hey Brandon, real quick on that, where is the liability issue? Should there something happen on that property? Who's gonna be responsible? The owner that that piece of equipment's put on, or is it gonna be the individual stand?
Um, probably both, and that's why we require an agreement between the stand owner and the the um private property owner because there is liability there.
There not gonna be an L L C requirement for these people or nothing like that? Okay.
Unless there's something that you would like to propose tonight after we get this. But I'm not asking, I'm not proposing that we do anything that creates um some liability protection on behalf of the stand or the owner. That's between them. It can't be on public property because then liability shifts to us. And that, uh, so that Howard Farms or Harward Farms, um, currently, again, that would not be allowed in the city. But the stand at the bottom, um, where that is the location where they're growing that that uh product, then that could be allowed. So what's not a temporary structure for seasonal sales? Um, we don't allow flowers. They're considered a seasonal item. Uh, we don't allow um rug or jewelry sales or anything like that because those are not seasonal as well. But we do allow um vending carts and food trucks. That's regulated under an entirely separate deal that is heavily guided by the state, and so we just kind of piggyback on what the state requires and allows. And so food trucks are not part of this conversation. We're just mainly talking about temporary structures associated with seasonal sales. And as I mentioned, um, right now, they're only allowed in A-one zones on premise. So if you notice in your red language in the packet, um, we are proposing tonight to you that we amend that to be allowed in the C-three zones only, as well as the A-one agricultural zones on premise. And there's a caveat to that. I'll get to that in just a second. So you you can see the zoning map there. The C-three zones are largely up and down Riverdale Road. So that is one of the proposals we're making in terms of the new amendment, which is to add the C-three zone allowance. We're also proposing some new standards, so we would um, instead of requesting a waiver to the city code, we would just flip that and say that any person that wants to do a temporary structure for the purpose of seasonal sales, they would have to just come get a temporary use permit. And they would still be required to provide an informal site plan, so that's basically a drawing that they would do or they would get a map and put a square on where they would be located. And here's the caveat. Um, we feel comfortable allowing temporary structures for the purpose of seasonal sales in C-three zones if they have sales tax certificate, meaning they've registered with the state and they can produce to Michelle as they're applying for the temporary use, that they have um a sales tax number with the state and that they would be paying sales tax.
Now, those people that are doing it in front of their own property, they're growing it there, they don't have to pay sales tax, is that right?
That's right. Um, and so there isn't in the in the red language, um, except for those exempt by state law. So if you are producing it and selling it on your own premise, you're exempt. And if you're a farm, in the case of McFarland Farms, um, they would be selling it, um, they they would fall under the agricultural exemption for sales tax under the state code. And so what I'm proposing is that we can make certain changes that I think are effective, allowing for some of these in in the C-three zone, but I, from my research, the reason why the twenty thirteen code was enacted was to avoid having any vendors come in and compete with our local businesses. So if everyone is on the same playing field in terms of sales tax payment, then I think there's no difference between allowing a temporary um structure for seasonal sales versus a new business coming in. One's temporary, one's semi-temporary. Um, and so, so even with these changes that I'm proposing, it cleans up the code. It, I think it makes it clear, but uh from my understanding of reading the state code, um, the McFarland Farms does not pay sales tax because they have an agricultural exemption, and therefore they still would only be, they would not be allowed to to have a stand in the city.
Without the uh license or this temporary permit?
Well, they wouldn't qualify because they don't pay sales tax.
Okay, regardless.
Regardless, yep.
So with these changes, McFarland still would not be able to?
Right.
Unless they change their status.
Unless they change their status, which I don't think that they would. And I'm, I I guess I'm not clear, but I guess you can, even if you're exempt, you can still pay sales tax to the state?
I'm curious. I'm I'm thinking that as a city, it would be beneficial to our residents to have things like farm stands within the city.
That's true.
Is there a way that we can write or change this code so that it is more conducive to that?
Um, and that's why we're talking tonight, so I'm proposing that we we protect our local business by allowing temporary seasonal sales that that are on the same footing as our local business, so there's no unfair competition there. If that's something that um that you want to change, then it's in tonight's motion, you can make a modification. Um, this obviously is a city council decision. It's a legislative act. Um, but in terms of my research and what I'm proposing is that the reason why I think it was put in place in the first place was to create it, to avoid creating an uneven playing field with temporary sales versus local businesses who have to pay, collect sales tax and pay that sales tax.
Hey Brandon, if you do that, um, Christmas trees don't pay tax either.
Are they an agriculture exemption?
Under nursery.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of an overall benefit to our community. So I see what you're saying, but I, in my opinion, it would better benefit the community to allow that exemption and any other types. You know, if you're doing shaved ice or something, absolutely pay sales tax um or any other kind of goods. But when we're talking about farm fresh produce being available in our city, I think that that benefits the entire community in a way that would be worth considering.
Celeste, I, my only concern I have with that is produce don't really last very long. And if you have taken sales away from like Walmart and Target and all these other stands are taking all that away from them, what's that gonna do to them that pays big business, big dollars to keep that inventory moving at their store? Where we stagnated on certain items during that seasonal period, how would that affect the big businesses as well? And I hear what you're saying and I understand that, but I think there's gonna be a little repercussion on those that have that big massive amount of inventory and not being able to move it.
I think that's a good.
Change, and we allow them to be tax exempt. What brother, Mr. Poulsen's saying is that we might be able to sue based on unfair connections.
Yes.
Like that, we could actually have a legal action taken against the city of Riverdale if we were to set up something where it would be. I think that's what I think.
Yeah, we, I have to do some research on that. Um, you know, there there's a lot of protections in place for for regulations at a municipal level because not everything is equal um as much as we try. So, but I'll I'll take note of that and look into it. Uh, that is a consideration. Um, obviously, the the person providing the the stand, let's say a vegetable stand, in this case, in a in a C-three, that would be the only place an outside stand could go, right? They couldn't go in the A-one zone. Um, they would have to get the property uh owner's permission. I would not imagine that a Walmart or a Target or um anyone who is in the business of selling fresh fruits and vegetables would give that stand permission to do that. So they're likely going to go away from those areas and to property owners that, you know, discount tire for for lack of a better thing. Um, so I don't see proximity issues necessarily, and there is a proximity restriction. There's no closer than one per site or within five hundred feet in any direction, really. Um, but uh generally speaking, um, if there is an impact to those who are selling fresh fruits and vegetables in their store and they're losing business, they're losing business um in a manner that isn't uh even playing field because the business that they're losing to is not paying sales, collecting sales tax and paying it. Is it gonna be massive? Probably not.
I think another thing to consider too would be that there could be, there could be potentially a small benefit to local businesses because if I'm driving through Riverdale Road and I stop at the farm stand or I come to Riverdale Road to stop at a farm stand that I know is there, I might run to Walmart and pick up my other groceries at the same time. So there's a possibility that it could level out a little bit.
I can see that, yeah.
My, the question that I had was, is there a reason that it's a fifteen-week duration? I could see where, for example, with a a vegetable stand, not knowing their exact season, but let's just say it started in June, then you go clear until October selling pumpkins.
Mm-hmm.
That's more of a twenty-week uh timeframe. So I don't know if the season really starts the first of June, the middle of June, the end of June, or exactly.
Right.
Exactly when to.
I think it varies with what you're selling, but yeah, and and that's again, open for for your discretion tonight. Um, all of these questions, whether or not we require a sales tax exemption, whether and because to to Michelle's point, that could affect other vendors that aren't fresh fruits and vegetables, our Christmas tree vendors, maybe some snow shack people. I know Michelle has a snow shack and she probably pays sales tax because she's an upstanding citizen.
Question, has this company, this farm?
Mm-hmm.
Do they have any other cities that they have put there?
Mm-hmm.
They have put it in other cities?
Mm-hmm.
I've seen it out in West Haven. I've seen it in Clearfield.
Yeah.
What's their regulations? I mean, why are they allowing them to do that there? Have you looked into that?
Yeah, I I tried to um see if I can find some similar code in the areas that they're at, and they're mostly in the rural part of Weber County on the west side. And so there's just not a lot of regulation because that's just what they do in those agricultural areas. So I don't think that there's a lot of um rules, yeah.
Downtown city, they haven't really put it in a downtown, Riverdale?
Not that I can find. It's mostly West Weber. I looked at Layton, thinking they might be there. Um, they're not in Ogden. Um, I couldn't see anything in Roy.
Cause I thought that there are someplace else we need to look and see.
Yeah.
Why are they allowed there? And are they paying this tax? Are they not? Are they exempt?
And keep in mind, this is a sales tax um requirement by the state, and so they they exempt certain business types like nurseries and agricultural uses from collecting sales tax. Therefore, they don't pay sales tax to the state. Um, and so again, in a, an environment like Riverdale, where they might be co-locating within the same general area, probably not on the same lot, then my proposal is that we make that as fair as possible by by collecting sales tax from everybody. But if that's something that um you would like to modify tonight, then I think that um there's an opportunity to do that um through the dialogue and the motion. Same thing with any of these items.
The next thing is, you know, we think about, we're taking away from Walmart selling their tomatoes by doing this. Well, during Fourth of July, we have all kinds of fireworks stands all over.
Mm-hmm.
And Walmart sells, well, same stuff there too, so.
The key is they're both paying sales tax.
Also, the fireworks that go inside the stores are those same companies like TNT or Dragon or whoever gets a separate business license on a temporary basis to go inside those stores. So like you go into Sam's Club and you see fireworks, you go into Home Depot, Lowe's, Lowe's, you see fireworks. Those are the same companies that are selling them out in parking lots.
So this is a separate company.
It's a separate permit. They have to get a separate fire inspection, all that kind of stuff. And then I have two other things to say, if that's okay. Um, the fifteen weeks, there's fourteen weeks between um Memorial Day and Labor Day. So Christmas trees are gonna be shorter than that, and fireworks are set by the state as far as how long they can operate. So that's just what summer is, is I believe where that came from. Uh, I thought I had something else, but maybe not.
Brandon, in the original code, where does it state any kind of zoning restrictions?
That's part of the problem with the code. It doesn't. So it leaves it up to um each individual zone to dictate. That's part of the problem with the code, it doesn't. So it leaves it up to each individual zone to dictate. And the only zone that I found that allows for is the A1 zone on premise. So instead of having to go through all the zones and figure that out, I thought that we would put it in this code section and just call it out clearly that in these zones it's permitted. And by default, if a zone is not permitted, it's automa-, or excuse me, if it's not, if it is, how do I say that? If it's not listed as permitted, then it's automatically not permitted.
Yeah, okay. In your communication with people at the farm, I'm curious whether this sales tax certificate, would that be something that would deter them from coming? Or is that something that they are expecting to pay and they're comfortable with that?
My, we didn't get a chance to talk about it, I was hoping that it would be part of tonight's discussion with them here. But they are exempt at the state level, so I'm assuming that they don't choose to collect that and pay that anywhere if they don't have to. But would they do it here? I'm not sure. And we'll have to consider the implications to the other vendors that might be affected as well, like Christmas tree vendors and others that have a longstanding history here selling Christmas trees. Home Depot sells Christmas trees, Low sells Christmas trees, maybe Walmart too, and so-
Birches Trees has been here for a long time.
Yeah. So in terms of the other proposals or proposed standards, I tried to keep a lot of them the same. So 8 to 9 PM operating hours, that's typical for retail hours. I mentioned private property only, so they couldn't set up in the park or, unless they have a special use permit like a farmer's market, that's kind of a different thing. 200 square feet is already in the code, that's something that is a kind of a cutoff point so we don't carry over into the building code and start to get into the building code side of things with the type of construction and certain requirements. They have to be self-contained, meaning we don't want extension cords running from a store in the back all the way through the parking lot, powering their generator or their lights or whatever. So everything has to be self-contained.
About portable potties, that's your responsibility?
We're not requiring it, but if they want to provide it, then they'll have to work that out and put it on the site plan and that'll be part of the approval.
The assumption is that they will be sharing the site. There's usually a different building that will have access to restrooms.
They could run into that facility, okay.
They have to have a bathroom agreement with the business.
Right.
They do have to, okay.
Right now. I can't remember if that carried over in the new language, we'll have to double check.
That's why I'm asking.
And then in terms of the approval authority, so that would all be governed by the Director of Community Development, that's me. And if they didn't like what I said, then they can appeal to the planning commission. So you would have the final say as to whether or not my interpretation of their proposal was fair. So-
Can I ask another thing? Does this company also do our farmer's markets? Can they bring their stuff to the farmer's markets?
Oh yeah, so if-
That's okay.
Yeah, totally different thing, yeah. Because farmer's markets are operating under a special event permit and so those vendors can-
So we can just open it up?
Yep.
They can't come normal, they can just come to our farmer's market and sell.
Now are they tax exempted also?
I would imagine. Yeah, if it, there's some, and I think I put it in my transmittal. The state is very specific about in an agricultural exemption, who is exempt and who isn't. So if you're selling it through your family or your employees, then you're okay. But if there's deviation from that, then they're no longer exempt. So a couple of things, I think modifications to my proposal is appropriate. So I'd invite you to talk about that and deliberate on whether or not what I've presented is appropriate or not. If you want me to totally start over, then that's awesome too, I'm happy to do that. The petitioner did request that you table it until they could come and speak on behalf of their situation. So that's up to you if you want to table it to another meeting when they can be here. So I'll just turn it back to you, Chair, and let you deliberate.
Thank you for that information. So commissioners, we would now entertain a, well, let me ask this first.
You need to do a public hearing. You still need to open and close a public hearing?
No.
Okay.
And that's where I was headed. But did you have any other questions for Mr. Cooper?
I have one. What was the reasoning for wanting to come to Riverdale? Was there a reason?
She did mention it, obviously there's 60,000 people that go up and down the road, so I think that that visibility was appealing to them.
So they produce more than they can sell from their own property?
Right, so their distribution model, as far as I understand, is at least selling into grocery stores and selling through these roadside stands. Maybe there's more, but those are the two big ones, I think.
Okay. All right, then it'd now be appropriate to have a motion for the public hearing.
Let's open that motion, open the public hearing.
So you're making a motion to open the public hearing? Okay.
Do we need to schedule the public hearing so that there's notice beforehand? We did that already, okay.
We've already done that. So we have a motion to open the public hearing?
McFarland wants us to table it, is that correct?
That was their request.
Can I can come?
We can still discuss it though, can't we?
Yeah, we can still discuss it, so we can still have the public hearing. And then they could, we could still table this and then they could come.
So we've noticed the public hearing, so you'll want to do that.
Right.
And then at the conclusion of the public hearing, you would make a consideration to approve, approve with modifications, deny or table.
Okay, right. So we have a motion that is proposed that we open the public hearing. We're looking for a second, if anyone.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we poll on this one? Or this is just a acclamation?
Yeah, I think so.
So you don't have to poll.
Okay, so all in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is now open to receive public comment regarding recommendation to amend Riverdale City Code 10199, temporary structures for seasonal sales. So we would invite any of the public that are present if they have comments that they would like to address the commission on at this point. Okay, seeing none, we would then look for-
I propose we close the public hearing?
I second.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next would be the consideration to forward a recommendation to the city council to amend Riverdale City Code 10199, temporary structures for seasonal sales. As mentioned, McFarland Farms has requested that we table this so that they could be present to address any of their concerns. We would be able to still discuss any amendments that we would like to consider so that when they do come, we're kind of a little bit further down the road as far as any amendments or approval modifications that we would like to make to how it's presently drafted. So any comments from the commissioners?
I used to have one. What kind of regulations do we put on them? I mean, are these vegetables, have they been sprayed with insecticides? Do we have some kind of health regulations that's required for this?
Yep.
I think it's already-
It's regulated by Weber Morgan Health Department.
And how do we control that as a city? They have to come with a health certificate?
Yeah, I won't give them a business license until they have everything they're supposed to have.
What's everything?
Depends on the business, so.
I mean, in this case?
Or food, a health department permit, if it applies, a sales tax license, a fire inspection, a building permit, signed off with the CFO if they need that.
So Riverdale wouldn't necessarily be monitoring that, that would be the responsibility of Weber Morgan.
I believe that language is in the red part.
It is.
I'm just really concerned because if somebody walks up and says, have you sprayed this for insecticides? Can they provide a certificate that says, yes, I've done this or free of contamination and all that kind of stuff?
Not us, but the regulations from Weber Morgan Health Department would govern that.
What liability would Riverdale have in this case at any given time throughout the, no, if anything went south, we would be free?
This is very similar to licensing a business, but we're just doing it on a temporary basis.
So the liability would rest with a stand and the business whose property they've made an agreement with.
And Weber Davis, should it be an issue with health?
The Weber Morgan Health Department, yes.
You made a comment about the fact, the reason why they wanted to come here was because of the traffic volume. I still have a concern about that a little bit in regards to the sales tax because the reason why the traffic volume is here is because the people that are doing business here brought it and they've earned it. That's one thing that I think that if that's what they're trying to step in on and they're using the A1 to avoid sales tax, that's a concern for me because it could be a concern for us as a city in relation to our good neighbors that are already here and paying sales tax.
And I believe that was the thinking of the council back in 2013 when they created that language that only allowed, well, that did not permit seasonal sales of fruits and vegetables outside of your own property.
Which is interesting because now we have zero seasonal sales of fruits and vegetables. So I think we, I mean, there's always cost benefit, right? And so we look at, could this potentially harm some of our grocery businesses in Riverdale? And there is potential there. And there's also a potential to provide ready access to farm fresh local produce. And I think depending what our goals are as a city, whether our goals are primarily to build commercial business or if our focus is on the health of our citizens, and obviously it's both, that's something that you have to weigh out. In my personal opinion and the studies that I've done and the recent experiences I had in Europe, I view having a farm stand in the middle of Riverdale as something extremely beneficial for our residents that I find would be not very likely to heavily impact our businesses. I think if people are going to go to Walmart, they're going to go to Walmart for more, most people don't just go for produce. And so they would go to Walmart anyways to go grab the things they want. But the people who are looking for something that's local and fresh and then they would purposefully go to the farm stands.
Well, I think that has a purpose, there's no doubt about that in my mind, but I do think like, for example, we're not like Roy, I get that, but they got Saco's out there, they're local. That would hurt Roy City in this scenario, where we are not in that scenario with another competitor directly selling local fruits and vegetables. But you still don't want to get the hierarchy of these big industries, Targets and Walmarts upset over a fruit stand. That's the last thing you want. And that's the concern, I think, if it may bother them or it may not, but I don't want to see a big company like that get offended over a fruit stand.
I think it's extremely unlikely that Walmart or Target would leave the city because there's a fruit stand somewhere in the premises.
You don't know.
And they also don't have to give permission for it to be on their property.
Right, they won't do it on their property, but they know it's in the city somewhere competing with them. I love fresh fruit, I drive to Brigham City to get it every year, there's no doubt about it. I love fresh fruit, don't get me wrong, I just don't want them to harm any possible businesses that's here. And if, could we possibly talk to maybe management in this decision and say, hey, just a simple question for you? What's your opinion if we were to bring a fruit stand to compete with you guys for four months out of the year? Would that bother you people at all? Then it'd put a lot of rest at ease as to yes or no.
I have a question in relation to what was said earlier, and I just want to clarify that I understood it correctly. The state of Utah does not require sales tax for these farm stands, is that correct or did I misunderstand that?
As long as-
As long as they're A1 agricultural things.
Is that only A1?
No, no, it's the nature of the business, so the state doesn't care about zoning. The state cares about how the nature of the business.
It's also the actual items. If a farm stand is also selling some crafts or some shoes, those are taxed, the corn is not.
Kind of like the difference in actual food versus, you know, soft goods. So if the state of, in my mind, if the state of Utah is saying, you know, we don't expect sales tax collected on this.
It supports farms.
And supports-
And it supports the health of our citizens.
My question is, do we really have standing to step in and say, but we're going to require it? We can.
That is certainly your purview.
But then, again, cost benefit, you know, how much will we really attract and receive in sales tax since the state only gives us a pittance to begin with, whatever's collected? I tend to agree with Commissioner Nolan that this is, would be beneficial to the citizens and to the community, so.
Under the operational standards, the very last sentence, is that not saying that if the state doesn't require the state law or state sales tax that we would not require it? Is that saying something different?
I don't have it in front of me.
All persons or entities doing business in Riverdale City except for those exempt by Utah State Law shall provide to the city a copy of the state certificate listing the appropriate Riverdale City point of sale code as a prerequisite to receiving a temporary use permit.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. If that's what that says, that was, that was an omission. I failed to remove that because we did change it. So the state does have that exemption, so we would remove that. So thank you for bringing that up, I did not realize I left that in.
Then they wouldn't have to have a state sales-
That's right.
If they were exempt.
Right, so that's what, that's what we're talking about now. So we could leave that language in and remove the other language that talks about, that talks about the need for a sales tax certificate under the temporary use permit. So those two are at odds, one has to stay, one has to go. So thanks for bringing that up, I didn't realize I left that in there.
So help me understand the areas where, if we permitted this, where could they go? Where could they set up the stand? What are some of the spots?
Shown on that map, the purple area that mostly covers-
Along most of Riverdale Road.
Almost entirely along this part of Riverdale Road and some of the upper part. Commercial sides of Riverdale.
So basically from the viaduct, the train viaduct to probably 84, that general area in there.
All along Riverdale Road.
Yeah. Central.
The car dealerships.
Well, look where Birches has been. Would that not be probably the site that most people are going to be eyeing to do that?
They could decide in there too because Birches don't come until November, December, so.
And one thing we've talked about too is parking and how we have excessive parking right now and this could be a potentially good use. Temporary solutions where we have something to come in and utilize that space.
So, thinking of birches, because they are a traditional thing, the timing might not work out, but given the 500-foot limitation, if someone else would want to come to an area around the birch site, for whatever reason, fruits, vegetables, other trees, fireworks for Christmas, whatever, then that would be a limitation too.
You'd probably even push it further east towards good harvest or good earth or whatever it is and right where that sign is.
I think currently they can't even, they have to be so many feet away and on the other side of the road.
I think it's a thousand.
500 feet?
I think it's a thousand.
Yeah, but also, but not on the same side of the, they have to be on the opposite side of the road.
Other side, okay. And, point that I addressed earlier that I would consider having a, an amendment or a modification would be that we increase that from 15 weeks to 20 in order to be able to accommodate a full, full growing season.
That wouldn't be a problem.
So, any further discussion that you would like to, to make on this?
Chair, can I just respond to your, your thought about checking with the stores to see if they would have any problem with that? I'm happy to do that, but I wouldn't be able to do that for every type of stand. So Christmas trees that may be tax exempt, you know, those kind of things. It, it would be easy to do it for this particular case, but I wouldn't be able to do it each time that a potential competitor came in that would need a waiver of, of the stores.
And I appreciate and understand that. I'm, I'm just saying, this specific fruit stand issue, I'm not worried about the trees and that later to get permission, you know, other stores that sell trees. Just this particular time during this growing season of 14 or 20 weeks with the major stores, just a quick call and a, would this bother you as a manager? Or just get their feedback, wouldn't that be a little bit more at peace with your understanding? It's a no-brainer, they're okay with it, let's go with it?
I think if...
I think they'd appreciate us asking.
If it's part of your consideration, in terms of this decision, if you're tabling or whatever, I'd be happy to do that in the interim, right? So between now, if, if you don't consider this tonight and you do table it, I'd be happy to check with those people so that I can have that information for when you untable it.
I feel a lot more personally comfortable asking those.
Okay.
You know?
I think it's a good idea.
Just for peace of mind.
Yeah.
I'm all for it, but I just really don't want to cause, stir the pot with the, the other stores and the people that's out there that spent a lot of money, you know, developing, maintaining their fruits and vegetables to, to keep it stocked. Don't get me wrong, Commissioner, I, I appreciate and understand what you're saying, but I really think that they deserve that question asked to them.
Another point just to throw out there, and I have no problem with that, is that I think when we're talking about stores like Walmart and Target, the vast majority of their profits are not going to be from produce. It's going to be from different things. And if there's a produce stand that has a limited supply, that might take away a very tiny portion of their produce, maybe. But a very tiny of their produce that is a very tiny part of their profit margin, I think would be so negligible that it would greatly benefit our community without presenting many complications for our businesses.
Well, I agree that it wouldn't do much to their business, but I don't want to do something where we feel like we're stepping on them and overlooking them, just like what Commissioner Paulson said. I would love to have the produce here, fresh, everything like that, but I just do not want to step on the toes of existing businesses and give them the opportunity to voice their opinion.
So we wouldn't be able to contact all of them, but I can commit to ta- talking to the majors.
Yeah.
If that's something that you're tabling tonight, then that'll give me a couple of weeks to do that. And with their concurrence, then at least that is some level of comfort that we're trying to balance the best of both worlds. And that concurrence could change because I'm only talking to store managers and if they leave, then a new store manager might.
Well, that's fine, just, the current, current management's fine.
But we could have that on record.
Sure.
And hopefully, when you talk to him, we're not asking him to put the food market in his property, on his property. We're not telling him that.
That's up to the individual properties.
That's right, but we're not saying, "We want to put it here on your property." So hopefully, he, they don't come across, they keep, "We're going to put it here for this."
We'll make that clear, yeah.
Yeah, we're just going to put it in the Riverdale area.
Four months could impact somebody more than you'd realize on bottom dollar. That's a long time for any store to operate four months, you know, a third of the year with competition. And that's, that's my concern about just making an even playing field.
We've already had a precedent set, they haven't complained about the other things that we've allowed. It's just happening, you know, the trees and the other things. This is new. This is something brand new that would be faced with, with the other businesses.
I believe that...
I hope they would agree to it.
Price points may make a difference too, because if you consider that Walmart and Target, because they're big players, they're able to negotiate prices more reasonable for market conditions. Whereas, I think the community at large would be willing to pay marginally higher for that fresh benefit.
To support local?
Yeah. So, we can attack this from all sides, trying to keep everybody happy, but there's a myriad of considerations in how we look at this, so.
And I think the fact that you've thought about the local businesses and the impact that they might see and that you've recommended that we reach out to them to see if we can get some kind of concurrence, I think that the city council will appreciate that. Because again, with their final decision, my understanding is the reason why we have this language in the first place that exempts seasonal fruits and vegetables is because there was that unfair playing field. So if there's some resolution to that, to the point where the council feels comfortable, I think that would go a long way in their decision.
Should we entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this item until March 8th.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second?
April 8th.
And an amendment?
Yeah, you said, "Yeah, that's a great idea."
And during that table, you'll go and reach out to those?
Yes, sir.
And we'll have a better understanding when we meet again?
Yes, sir.
And then we have...
Feel better if they do that.
My family's come in and talk with us too at that same time?
I'll let her know, she has one more chance.
And then we're going to vote.
That's right.
So we have a motion and a second. Is this one a poll? This one is a poll.
Yep.
So poll us.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henstraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Bothorpe? That was fast, yes. Commissioner and I?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, this will be tabled until our next commission meeting. Thank you for your careful consideration with this. Next, we would have comments by the planning commission and city staff. If there's any things that we would like to address at this time? We're not going to adjourn yet. I'd like to just publicly recognize Chief Warren. Many of you may have seen that, where he was selected as Chief of the Year for small communities. So, he's done a marvelous job. And, and it's amazing that he's received that recognition. Obviously, the Chinese foreign student situation had a lot to play with that. But then, right on the heels was what happened just within this week of the, the abduction of those two small children. So he's doing a great job and personally, I'd like to make note of that and how much we appreciate his hard work and efforts.
And to build on that, I think what happened this week makes us keenly aware of what these police officers go through on a regular basis. And for them to be able to continue in their work, especially for many, many years, as Chief Warren has, and be able to keep their sense of human, humanity and be kind and, and loving to those that they serve, I think is incredible and it's appreciated.
Yeah, we're well represented.
You bring me up today on those two children, I knew they were missing, but...
They were found, thanks to the Amber Alert.
Found probably within five hours.
That was promptly issued. Someone recognized the vehicle down in Springville.
Put it down in Springville?
Yeah.
They showed it on the UDOT camera, coming this way like at 1:00. And they figured at 3:00 the incident happened in Riverdale. And then so they was watching the return, about two hours return going back towards Springville. And they was dead on the button, you know, and they showed up heading back the same direction as they seen on UDOT cameras coming this direction. So they had their, they was ready, you know, they, they'd done their work and very top-notch. With that, can I just say, toot a horn to Chief Warren? I went to school with his dad, Brent Warren, and his dad is as a jewel-like Chief Warren is, a great man, and he raised a great son. I'll throw kudos to both of them.
Okay. Any further comments? Let's adjourn then to our, and resume our work session. And then we can... So do we have to close this meeting in order to open the work session? Reopen the work session?
We could just continue this meeting under, under the discussion.
Okay.
I mean, there's no need...
Are we on air then, when we adjourn?
Well, I, I would not adjourn yet.
Okay, so we will turn the time over to you, Mr. Cooper.
Okay, I don't know how to get that presentation up. The one I had upstairs. On my OneDrive, let me look here. Bear with me just a moment. Okay. Okay. It was too big to send, so I sent you a link. Great, we did it. Thanks for your patience. So, as a continuation of our discussion in the work session, we were talking about the modernization of parking. So we've, we've talked about thus far some compelling, compelling reasons why we might want to look at our code more closely on a universal holistic basis. We talked about some of the leading factors that are, that are contributing to the need to always kind of stay ahead of our parking ordinance. We looked at some other communities, and that's what this slide is here. Some other communities and what their parking regulations are for multifamily. And again, we're talking about all of our parking regulations in general, retail, commercial, office, residential, single-family, residential, multifamily. But tonight, I'm specifically referencing multifamily because that's the case study that we're looking at based on a project that is seeking reapproval. So let me walk you through this a little bit. You may get, need to get out your calculator. So this is the Riverside Flats project. This is where the Leslie's Mobile Home Park was. This originally received site plan and subdivision approval. The subdivision was renewed by you all as planning commission. The site plan expired, and so they're required to look at a reapproval. You all actually heard that and granted reapproval as a recommendation to the city council. But before I transmitted it to the city council, I realized that the parking code had changed from the original approval to the time of reapproval, right? And so that prompted the whole need to kind of revisit our parking regulation and to see if it's appropriate, not only for this project, but for all of our parking needs. And so I've, I've chosen to use this as a case study in this discussion because it is relevant. So on the right there, you can see the breakdown of the number of units that are depicted in the big picture. There's 82 one-bedrooms, 48 two-bedrooms, and 22 three-bedrooms for a total of 115 units there in that, that site plan. Under the original approval, they were required to have 263 parking stalls, which is a 1.73 ratio, so 1.73 stalls per unit. And what they actually provided in the approval was 279, which is 1.83. So the original approval was overparked based on our ordinance. And i- if they were to meet the current ordinance in a reapproval, as is with no changes, with the same number of units, they would be required to have 342 parking stalls at the 2.25 units per stall, or stall per unit. Which is deficient in what they're providing, they're providing the 279. And there's no way for them to meet the 342 stalls without removing units. And so basically what they'd have to do to meet the current 2.25 ratio is to drop 28 units. Which is going the wrong way in terms of our goals of providing housing and, and, and density and appropriate density in terms of multifamily especially. And it would, it would essentially render this site plan infeasible and they would have to start over. And, and apartments wouldn't be feasible, so they'd likely come back to us with a totally different project. I have been working them, with them to see what a new ordinance might look like and if they can get more parking stalls in the current site plan. So that's what you're looking at here in this picture. They've reconfigured what is currently in that green box there in the middle, their dog park. So they've removed some of that. They've created more parking stalls, a little bit haphazardly. It, it probably would work, although it's weird on this picture. They probably could get 16 to 20 more stalls. In doing so, I do believe they still meet our landscaping requirements because there's a certain percentage of landscaping that they have to meet. So even though they reduce their dog park, I believe they still would likely meet the landscaping requirement, even with these newest stalls. So that would be only the addition of 16 to 20 units. It still would not be enough to meet our current, or excuse me, parking stalls. It would still not be enough to meet our current code of 342. They would only get to be about... They would only get to be about 300.
Quick question. The dog park was also a retention pond. So would that even work to put parking there instead? Or is that space needed for a retention pond?
Retention can be done above ground or below ground. In the case of the dog park, it was above ground. So when the, when the storm water would flow in, then the dog park would be not usable. In the case of a parking lot, depends on your dog, I guess, right?
If it's a water dog.
But in terms of a parking lot, you can put that same underground.
Right, but that would be more costly also.
Yeah, it would.
So that would, that would add to the cost of the building.
Yep. Okay, so on this idea, the original approval is still the 263 required, and what they've provided is 279. If we do a new ordinance, then that could change. And I didn't give you any recommendations because I wanted you to see what other cities have been doing and look at it relatively in the, in the context of this project. So the West Haven model, if you go back to this, on the bottom, they have a one stall per one bedroom, two stalls per two and three bedrooms, and then a 10% of the total for guests. So if you go to that first section, West Haven model, so 82 one bedrooms, that means, that's 82 parking stalls. 48 two bedrooms, that's 96 parking stalls. 32, or excuse me, 22 three bedrooms, that would be 44 parking stalls with a 10% add of 22. So that would put them, if this was built today in West Haven, they would be required to have 244 stalls. And again, they're already providing 279. If this was done in Leighton, Leighton is a studio, which we don't have, so we'll disregard that. So one bedrooms are 1.4 stalls per unit, two bedrooms are 1.75, and three bedrooms are 1.9. So if you do that math, 82 one bedrooms equals 115 stalls, 48 bedrooms equals 84 stalls, and 22 three bedrooms equals, or, yeah, it's 22 three bedrooms equals 41, say, call it 42 stalls. There is no guest stall bonus in Leighton, so if that project was to be built in Leighton today, they'd be required to bring in 241 stalls. Again, they're already providing 279. The Roy model, Roy is two per unit blanket. They have a caveat where one of those should be covered, which I thought was interesting, and then a .5 unit bonus for the guests. So if you apply that, again, 82 one bedrooms, that's 164 stalls, 48 bedrooms, 96 stalls, 48 two bedrooms, 96 stalls, 22 three bedrooms, 44 stalls, with a total of 380 with 76 guest stalls at that .5. So that would be a bit closer to what we would require. We're 342 in our current ordinance, so that would be more, a little bit heavier than what we were at today in Roy.
Would it be possible to talk to someone in these cities and find out how this is working for them? Because it's interesting, the vast difference between them and when we're trying to figure out what we want to do. Because I'll admit that originally, back when we changed the parking requirements, that I was erring more on the side of, let's do more parking to make sure we have enough. I've since become more educated on the issue and realized that parking is not free, and that there's also a problem with having too much parking and it's that balance again.
Right.
And, and looking at, at this now, what you're proposing to me looks very much sufficient for the needs, but I would be curious to hear from somewhere like North Ogden that has higher parking, are all of their parking stalls being used, do they find, or somewhere like West Haven that has lower? Are they feeling like they have enough parking, or are they having overflow onto streets?
Right.
It would be interesting to gain a little bit of insight there into some different cities to see how those are working for them.
Not every city that has, let's go back here, not every city in the bottom has new development that we can test. Like West Haven, I don't know of a new multifamily project there in the last few years. The interesting thing about Leighton is if you look at how they've, how they have attributed it to the individual number of units in each, or individual number of bedrooms in each unit, you can go back to, to the upper table where it says the Parkway, and that came out to be about 1.57. So that's a project that was built just last year. So I could easily go to them and say, how is that 1.57 working for you across that distribution model of the individual bedrooms? So yes, the answer is yes. I'll be happy to do that.
That would be valuable information.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, Brandon, Mark Shepard, the mayor of Clearfield, he's got that Legend Towers out there, and it's massive.
Yep.
He would be a good source. And I know he's, he's a real estate broker, and he'd be more than happy to give you his input. He told me when they was first building it, he was the most hated mayor in Clearfield. But he said, people settle down now, and they, they appreciate what they have out there. He would be a good source, because that's been in the motion now. It's been built where West Haven is fairly new.
Right.
But Clearfield, and it might be in a little different category, because it's closer to the front runner and it's closer to Salt Lake, but it'll kind of give you perspective. And I know he'd be a good asset, a good influence to give you that information.
I appreciate that. I'll reach out to him. Is that a structured, that, that's a structured parking building, right?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be good to look at. I do know that, you know, that's called a TOD site, that Clearfield stuff, so transit-oriented development. And typically, when development happens around a front runner stop or other types of a, like a BRT, a bus rapid transit, then there is a reduction in parking, assuming that people are going to use transit as well.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I'll do it. That's a good idea. So I won't bore you with the North Ogden thing. It's the same methodology. Essentially, you can see that 375 would be required if it was built today. So if you go back to our 279, we're about in the middle of those four analogues. And that's probably a good place to be. I think that North Ogden, again, none of these cities are Riverdale. And so this is just an example of kind of where others are. And ultimately, it's our job to figure out that balance, as Commissioner Nolan talked about, in terms of what's appropriate so, so that we're using our land appropriately without causing undue stress on our properties or undue stress on our roads. I laughed a number of years ago at someone who, we were talking about parking, and they, they said, well, look at our city streets and look at all those cars parked on our streets. And I was like, well, what are streets for? And it was, they were taken back a little bit because they hadn't put it in the context of that. Streets are meant for cars, whether they're traveling or stationary. And so having cars parked on our streets, again, is a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing because it shows activity, it shows vitality. It's a bad thing when you want to snowplow, so you generally have to make rules around that. But our streets are for cars, and do we always want to have every single car in that unit required to park inside the property? Or is it, is it appropriate to use our streets for guest parking or something like that? So that's all I had tonight. We covered most of it in our work session. I wanted to get through that so you can kind of see what we're up against specifically with this project. It is a request of theirs for us to look at the code when it comes to the multifamily parking regulation, but I didn't want to just pluck that out without seeing this through the lens of, of the broader picture.
Will you still send this out so that we can have us to review and look over? Digest a little bit further?
There's some concern, given the financial impact of the current code to the project. Like I said, this, what you're looking at today, if we were to impose the 300 and, what was it?
That's going to be tough.
The 342 stalls, if we were to impose that on this project, it would die. But I don't want you to make decisions in fear of losing projects. I want to make decisions in the context of what's right for the, for the community and for what's right, given all the factors that we've talked about tonight. Some, in doing so, somewhere, we'll find the right answer for this project.
So is the problem here really is that too many units per...
10 pounds in an eight pound hole.
Yep, okay. We're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, okay? Is that the problem we're having? Is that the real problem?
Let me direct you back to this chart. If you recall, I said that, given the, the size of each parking stall, each parking stall that we require is 162 square feet. If you add that to the drive aisle that every stall is connected to, then you're essentially creating a situation where, on a one acre site, 25 units of residential apartments would require parking that would take up 40 to 49% of the land. So yes, we're trying to put eight pounds in a 10 pound bag, but it's the, it's the wrong direction. We're utilizing our land for, for parking in a manner that may not be conducive to our goals. And that's really the discussion that we're having is, is the current parking ratio of 2.25 for multifamily? And here's an example. We have a, an example of a commercial situation. We have a commercial user who wants to put an addition on their building. And right now, their existing facility is packed. There's not a single stall available. So in their day-to-day practical use of the facility, they are 100% maxed out in parking. The new addition would require four parking stalls per each room, let's call it. And so with the proposed number of rooms they wanted, you times that by four, that gives you, let's say, 25 more stalls. It's, they would still be underparked, even though our regulation says they're required to, to do it. So they can meet our regulation and still not have enough parking. So that's an example of, of a commercial situation, and their typical use, not having enough parking, even though we say they do.
Brandon, I've got a question, just hit me as you was talking, kind of brought something up. How about some of these people living in these facilities that drive trucks? They come home at night, big heavy trucks, like 10-wheel dump trucks. There's a lot of people out there that parks these type of vehicles in, which in this case, they wouldn't be able to. Where would all these trucks go? Or where would they live if they had to drive them kind of trucks to and from?
I don't know if we have a regulation about, that prohibits the parking of those trucks on public roads. A lot of cities do. I would recommend that we do if we don't, because just this, in a residential neighborhood, right? Having a 53-foot semi-trailer parked on the shoulder of 4,400 could potentially be a problem for lots of reasons.
Right.
So that's another thing we would want to look at. By doing that, does it push them parking their rigs illegally into commercial lots where there's plenty of room to navigate and turn around? I don't know.
I was just thinking, a lot of these guys work, you know, driving big trucks. They've got to come home and park them someplace.
Yeah. Zoning is, is very, Euclidean zoning, which is what we employ, is, is, it's a segregative type of a thing. It's, it's meant to say, you can do this here, but you can't do this here. And so when you create a residential zone, you're saying deliberately, some things are appropriate and some things are not. And that's just a choice we'll have to make. Is big rig, dump truck, semi-truck parking in a residential zone appropriate? So more to come. I'll have, I'll have some more language we could look at. So we'll, we'll go over the actual code language that's currently in place, and we can look at some red lines like we've done tonight and potentially talk about that. I'd like to do that in a work session and then finish it up in this session for a couple of additional meetings if we can. And then when we get comfortable where we need to be, then I'll bring it back to you. We'll have a public hearing, and we'll ask you to take action. It'll ultimately go to the council for their final approval. So stay tuned. This will be on the docket for a couple more months, I think.
Thank you. Good information. Something that needs to be reconsidered. Commissioners, anything further?
Making motion to adjourn?
I can.
All in favor?
Yes.
I'm not going to ask for any opposed. That was a good meeting.